All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome. This is the regular Wednesday, January 4th, meeting of the NAGS Head Board of Commissioners, and we're hereby called to order. If you will, please join me in a few moments of silence. Now, as you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
They're moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That brings us to recognitions, and either Andy or the chief, I think, are up this morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Happy New Year to everybody. Hope everybody had a good New Year. I'm here before you today to introduce our newest employee to the Police Department, Caleb Macon. Caleb was born in New Mexico but moved here to the Outer Banks just weeks after, and he has lived here ever since. He is a graduate from First Flight High School, and he started BLET soon after. He comes to us with two years of experience from Kitty Hawk Police Department and is excited to join our agency. Caleb is in his second week of FTO and is quickly adapting to our agency standards. He's highly motivated and looks forward to having a long career here at NAGS Head. In his off time, he enjoys hunting, fishing, surfing, and just overall being outdoors altogether. We're glad to have Caleb and look forward to seeing him grow in our department. Welcome, Caleb.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a recognition, and Kelly.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here this morning to recognize Steve Semensky, our Senior Building Inspector, on his 10 years of employment with the Town of Nagshead. Steve's been the Earl Murray Junior Employee of the Year nominee for the Planning Department for the past two years, but he's undoubtedly the Employee of the Year for our department. You've heard me talk about Steve's qualities and how he is an asset to the Planning Department, but there are a few things that haven't been said in the past, and they should have been, so I want to take the opportunity to do that now. Steve has been in the construction field since 1984, and as you can imagine, in 38 years, he's formed many professional relationships and connections within the area. He's been a licensed electrical contractor since 1995 and an instructor for the North Carolina Department of Insurance. Steve is one of the most steady, dependable, consistent, and equitable employees that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. He prides himself on being readily available and responsive to contractors, builders, and citizens of the town alike. In his 10 years working for the Town of Nagshead, Steve has never been late to work, not even a single day. I think for him coming in at 7:30, he's being on time. When it comes to plans review and permit turnaround, Steve is second to none. In fact, he recently told me that it is important and his priority that people receive their permits promptly so they can complete the job successfully and provide for families accordingly. Needless to say, Steve has had a positive impact and a powerful impact within the Planning Department for the past 10 years. He's highly valued both within the department and within the town as a whole, and we hope he's got another 10 years in him. Thank you.
Congratulations, Steve. Steve, congratulations. Congratulations.
Good morning, Paige.
Around 10 years ago, the town had a decorating contest, and with Michelle's great help, the Arts and Cultural Committee decided to reinstate it this year. I thought it would be a fun activity. The categories this year were "For the Joy of It," the "Best of the Beach" theme, the Griswold Award, which you can only imagine, and "Anything But the House," which is the boat, the barn, the doghouse, anything but the house. While we didn't have any residential entries, we did have several business entries, and the winners of this year received a yard sign like this, and it was the Nagshead Church and then Wave Riders. And Bobby was kind enough, Bobby from Wave Riders, wrote and said, "It made the world a difference to her staff to walk in the next morning because elves left this in their yard," and made their day. So that's kind of what it was about, and so I feel like we accomplished that. We look forward to more participation next holiday season, but it was a fun event, so just wanted to let you know our winners. We did announce them in the newsletter and then also on our social media pages.
Great. Thank you, Paige. Appreciate your committee, that committee, and you for bringing that back to the towns. It's fun. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comment, and I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board of Commissioners welcomes members of the public to provide comment to the board. This is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the board rarely answers questions or responds to comment, but it does give members of the public an opportunity to address the board with items of interest or concern to them. Anybody who wishes to provide public comment, if you'll please start by going to the podium and telling us your name and where you live, and then addressing your comments to the board as a whole. Also, we have a series of public hearings on the agenda for today. If you're here to provide input on one of those public hearings, you can reserve your comments until the public hearing is called. So this is really for items other than those public hearings. So anybody who wishes to go may go ahead and go to the podium.
Hello. My name is Barbara Costa, and I live in Southern Shores. Good morning and Happy New Year. My name is Barbara Costa, and I represent the Outer Banks Running Company, a locally-owned, veteran-run, family business on the Outer Banks. For those of you that are unfamiliar with our business, we are an outdoor-running event company that hosts weekly events that caters to visitors to our community throughout the year. We wanted the opportunity to discuss with the Board of Commissioners the statute in place that restricts weekly reoccurring events in the same location in Nagshead. This was a statute that was put in place quite a few years ago and we feel is now obsolete due to the continued growth and weekly changeover of the visiting population. We are a tourist-run economy, and every Saturday, the group of tourists that come here to spend their vacation changes, giving every business that caters to them a brand-new group of people to service. We have a large number of these vacationers that actually plan their vacations around our weekly events. By prohibiting businesses such as ourselves the ability to host these reoccurring events in the same location, we feel we are leaving vacation and tax dollars on the table, as well as denying large groups of people the enjoyment of participating in an outdoor, healthy event with their friends and families in such a beautiful setting. I think we need to cater to the community that drives our economy, and to do that, businesses like ours needs to be able to hold a weekly event in the same location, to give every vacationer the option to join in a healthy alternative as they enjoy our beautiful Outer Banks. By doing so, there is a trickle-down effect that happens. Locals are hired to work, we patronize other local businesses for the supplies needed to conduct these events, and monies are raised for local charities. And traditionally, these events do not stress the infrastructure or public works of this town. By showcasing our beautiful community each and every week, we are hopefully encouraging these tours to return again and again and to establish long-lasting traditions that include a yearly vacation to the Outer Banks. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and I hope you have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Shelley Blackstone, and I have a home in Nagshead. I just wanted to make a comment with respect to the zoning of the space between Kong Street and Hollowell Street, between the highway and between the highways. I know that there's a moratorium, and I think that's wonderful. I think that the Town of Nagshead is being very thoughtful about the preservation of Nagshead and land use policies and zonings and things like that. My comment is really more, really broader. It's about the broader community. I think it's, I don't think there's a lot of cooperation between the towns. As an example, if we have a very serious, which we do, workforce problem, getting workers in here and also with workforce housing, then why did we, and it's not Town and Nagshead, but why as a community did we invite Target in and just make the problem worse instead of possibly putting this workforce housing there at the K-Mark site that was, you know, already developed? It just seems like we're running out of land and we're overdeveloping this beautiful community, you know, and I think that we just need to be more thoughtful about that. I think the Town of Nagshead is trying very hard to be more thoughtful about that and as a leader, but we've just got to figure out ways to be more cooperative and preserve this beautiful area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackstone. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? For public comment, that is. If not, we will conclude the public comment session at this time.
All right. Thank you, John. That brings us next to the consent agenda, which you have before you, and a motion would be in order.
Motion to adopt is presented.
Second. Motion to adopt as presented, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That brings us to public hearings, and we'll go to the first public hearing. John, before you start, Manager Gorman would like to give us a little setup before we turn it over to you.
All right. Okay, thank you, Mayor. So obviously, the first public hearing on the agenda is related to the FY 2023 projects. We have two projects that we are working on, fairly large projects, public service facility and also advanced metering infrastructure for our water system. So we have several items for the board to consider today, and I just wanted to kind of go through the progression of things. So just as a recap, at the board's December 21st meeting, the board received a presentation from Tim Oakley of Oakley Collier and Associates, as well as Ann Collier regarding the Public Services Project. We also had a presentation from Andrew Carter of DEC Associates to present the bids for both Public Services Project and AMI Project. The purpose of the item on the December 21st agenda was to receive feedback on moving these projects towards execution and authorizing staff to publish a required public hearing notice for the financing. After the presentations, the board authorized the public hearing notice to include a not-to-exceed amount for the financing of $19.9 million for both projects. At today's meeting, we are requesting several actions by the board. The first action is related to the financing of both projects. We are asking the board to first conduct a public hearing related to the proposed financing. After the public hearing, the board will be asked to consider a resolution which was included in your packet. The resolution authorizes us to take the next steps towards the financing. Amy, the Town's Deputy Town Manager and Finance Officer, will give an overview of the resolution and the actions it authorizes. Andrew Carter with DEC Associates is also available to answer questions. He's here via Zoom today, and he can also discuss where we are in this process, recognizing that this is an initial step, and there are other steps the board will need to take in February regarding the financing. If the board decides to approve the resolution regarding the financing, we are asking the board to consider several related actions to the projects. The second item is a resolution which authorizes us to substitute a deed of trust for a previous financing which will remove a lien on the public services property and allow it to be transferred to another property. This will allow for the lien to be placed on the public services property for the new financing. This is something that we've worked out with the bank. Finally, we're asking for the board to take two separate actions to approve the projects. The first will be to authorize the notice of award to A.R. Chesson in the amount of $14,494,000 for the Public Services Project and authorize the Town Manager to execute a contract at the appropriate time based on the recommendation provided by Oakley Collier and Associates, which was in your packet on December 21st. Please keep in mind that the contract execution will not happen until the financing is secured, although you would be authorizing us to execute it today. It would not be executed until mid-February, which is when we would sell the bonds for the project. What we're doing today is just to allow the application to move forward with the, to the LGC, and approving the bid awards is part of that process. The second action we'd like you to take regarding the bids is to authorize the notice of award for the advanced metering infrastructure to Consolidated Pipe and Supply, which was the preferred bidder, in the amount of $1,650,000. And we would also authorize the Town Manager to execute a contract at the appropriate time for that based on a recommendation by staff. I guess at this time, we would ask to move forward with the public hearing, and as I stated, Amy can review the items as part of the public hearing. After we complete the two resolutions, perhaps Tim Oakley with Oakley Collier, who's here via Zoom, can provide a brief summary of the Public Services Complex presentation which was given to you on the 21st, and then he can answer any questions about that project at that time. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that. So now, John, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at this time, the board will open the public hearing to consider the proposed financing for the public works projects, the public services facilities, and advanced metering infrastructure system as described by the Town Manager. We will begin this process by receiving the staff's analysis of the various documents and proposals, with any additional detail beyond what the manager has provided by Ms. Our Deputy Town Manager and Finance Officer.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you. I texted Andrew Carter. He had been sent the Zoom link, but while we're waiting for him, I'm happy to recap the steps, what the public hearing is about now and moving forward, what our next steps are. So right now, the public hearing that we're going to be conducting today is to enter into an installment financing contract, not to exceed $19,900,000 for capital costs of constructing the Public Services Complex, which is going to be located in the same area that the current Public Works Complex is on, as well as advanced metering infrastructure for our water meters. And again, just wanted to reiterate that the not-to-exceed amount that's in the resolution part of this public hearing, we can't borrow more than that, but we can borrow less than that. And part of this public hearing speaks to the collateralization or the deed of trust on the Public Services Complex. And one act, not to get too far ahead, but the next action is not part of this public hearing, is we'll be asking the board to adopt another resolution that's a collateral swap, because right now, we do have collateral for another project on that property. So we will have collateral on this project as part of the financing. Moving forward, in February, if this gets, resolution gets adopted by the board today, we'll have another final resolution in February. We'll ask the board to adopt, as well as, capital project ordinances that I'll be bringing forward for the budgets for these projects. February 7th, we are scheduled to have the LGC approve this financing contract, which is after the board will adopt that second resolution in February. And today, again, a part of a separate action is that we will be asking the board to authorize the Town Manager to execute these contracts, both for the AMI meters and the Public Services contract. However, just wanted to reiterate again that we cannot execute these contracts until the money is in place and the financing is approved by the LGC. So we wouldn't even be able to execute these contracts until probably mid-February. So these are just sort of sequential steps that we need to take to follow statute as far as getting the money and executing the contracts. So Andy and Michelle had put on the screen sort of the steps that we talked about at the last meeting in December, and again, I sort of outlined some of the steps with the LGC meeting and the town approving that resolution in February. And again, this is for a public offering, so we will be selling these bonds to the public market, and that February 15th date is the date which we could execute the contract and pre-audit the contract. So again, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them if I can.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Miller? Anybody? All right. Thank you very much. Do you want to turn it over to Mr. Oakley, or how do you wish to proceed?
I guess at this point, we were going to, you've heard the presentation about the financing, and we have the resolution before the board, and so I guess, have we opened the public hearing?
Yeah, we're in the public hearing right now, so if the next item would be to approve that, we'll see if there's any comments from the public on this proposed resolution. Anybody wish to comment on this matter? This is your chance. All right. At this time, we will conclude the public hearing considering that resolution.
All right. So thank you. So for the purposes of discussion, a motion would be in order on the resolution authorizing the negotiation of an installment financing contract and providing for certain other related matters thereto.
Make that motion.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Board? I think we got a pretty thorough review of this at our last meeting, and I don't know that there are any real questions remaining at this point. Seeing none, then all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
All right. Thank you very much. The second action that we would like the board to take, again, this is not part of the public hearing, but I spoke to it briefly about the resolution. I call it a collateral swap, but I think it's, the title is installment financing contract and substitute deed of trust with PNC Bank. Right now, PNC Bank does have a deed of trust and collateral on that property for the fuel tanks that we did a couple of years ago. So PNC is going to be our underwriters for this project, so they have agreed to do, again, swap collateral for the Dowdy Park property, which we also did improvements on that project for the lighting when we did the fuel tanks. So that's allowed under statute, and our bond attorneys have prepared these resolutions so they're in accordance with statutes, and everything should be legal. So the second action is, again, not part of the public hearing, but just authorizing the collateral swap so PNC Bank can have switched the collateral from the Public Services property that it has right now to the Dowdy Park.
All right. Any questions for Amy on this? All right. Hearing none, then a motion would be in order on the resolution approving amendments to an installment financing contract and substitute deed of trust.
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And now, the third action is the notice of award and awarding the contract to A.R. Chesson and allowing the Town Manager to execute the contract. So I know Tim Oakley was on Zoom, and I didn't know if Andy, if the board had any questions or...
I think we were going to see if Tim could just give a brief summary of the presentation from December 21, and then allow the board to ask any questions before the board considers this item.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, board members.
Good morning, Tim. We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I can. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you, albeit virtual. Also, I will apologize in advance. I'm flying a coal, so I may start barking in the middle here. Can you see our screen currently?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. We, as a recap, we bid the project, one moment, I'm having a little difficulty here. All right. We received the bids on December 13th. We had five bidders for the project. As you know, A.R. Chesson, construction was the lowest responsible bidder with $14,494,000. The project does include the photovoltaics and the HVAC system for the fleet maintenance bays. There was a number of allowances contained in the budget that will help us as we go through in the events of bad soils and so forth, as well as landscaping. So we feel very comfortable that the budget's adequate to get the project completed in time and within budget. An overall view of the project itself and our recommendation is to bid it as, to award it as it was bid, and the all-in cost for the project, taking into consideration sales tax refunds, is $17,808,860. If you break that down by square footages of the total project, that comes in at about an all-in cost of $451 per square foot. While that's still a lot of money on anybody's menu, in today's marketplace, we had really good participation in the bids and actually received some really competitive numbers. So we felt very good about how this turned out for the town. The project also included photovoltaic array for three of the buildings, the administrative building, fleet maintenance, water distribution. That array will be able to set us up for a net zero energy usage for those facilities. The payback schedule, as you see, is runs from 14 to 17 years. The life expectancy of the panels is 30 years, so as we discussed in our last meeting, that will give the town 15 plus or minus years to accumulate additional funding to replace them in the later years. So overall, a great addition to the project, one that will save the town significant money. I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
All right. The board, we had a pretty robust discussion at our last meeting, and I understand that Commissioner Sears has taken the opportunity to watch the entire presentation and discussion, so I will ask, does the board have any questions at this point? All right. I see none, Tim. Thank you.
Sir.
Appreciate your work. So for the purposes of discussion, then, a motion to give notice of award to A.R. Chesson in the amount of $14,494,000 would be in order.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. Very good. I think we've done our homework. All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Thank you. And thank you, Tim. Appreciate your help. And I think we can proceed to the authorizing the manager to that contract. So a motion to authorize the manager to execute a contract with A.R. Chesson in the amount of $14,494,000 would be in order.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. All right. All right, is there any further information about the meters now?
Amy was just going to give a brief summary before you took action on that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Amy?
Hello again, and I just wanted to let you know that Andrew Carter, we got him online, our financial advisor. So if y'all had any questions for him, he's available. So I can talk about the meters really briefly, and then if we have any questions, he's, again, available to help out.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, of course. The water meters, again, they were part of the discussion at the mid-December meeting. And we bid them out under the technology statute, meaning it was a decision not only based on price, but also what it could offer us as far as what we presented in the RFQ. So with that being said, staff collaborated, and it came to a consensus that consolidated pipe was the best fit for our needs, and they did happen to be also the lowest price. So the actions we're asking the board to take today are the same steps that we did with the public services complex, would be to authorize the town manager to enter into the contract and award the contract to consolidated pipe.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Amy? John, we're still in the public hearing?
No, the public hearing is concluded.
Okay, all right, thank you. So no questions for Amy?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions for Andrew before we take any action on either of these items, which are the award and the contract? All right, hearing none, then for the purposes of further discussion, a motion to give notice of award to consolidated pipe for the meters in the amount of $1,650,495, is that correct? Would be in order.
So moved.
Have a motion, is there, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
One question.
Yes.
We have not really discussed the option for the app for customers to have on their phone.
Yes.
Are we interested in pursuing that?
Okay. Can you remind us, Amy, of this function?
Sure. The app, I think, was $8,400 or $8,900. I can't remember. But we, that price is not included in the bid itself, but we do have a contingency that we would ask as part of that not-to-exceed amount. It does include a contingency for both the public services contract and this pipe contract. So we would add that as part of the contingency money that we're asking for. So that would be something that we would ask the board, you know, we would do a change order for that, to do the app on the phone.
So that staff has a little direction without voting, is it the consensus of the board that we would want to offer the app to our citizens?
And the only reason I say that is because customers could use the apps, and for all those people that live out of town, they would be able to check their water uses. If they're having leaks during the winter, they would know it immediately.
Yep.
And I think that would be a good service, since most of our homes are closed up for the winter.
Yes.
And we've all seen houses with water on the outside frozen.
Yes, we have. Yes, we have. All right, thank you. I think that's, I think we have consensus to pursue that, understanding that that will come back to the board at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the notice of award. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. And the last item then would be to authorize the manager to sign a contract with consolidated pipe for that amount for the meters.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to Tim and Andrew for being here, too.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Appreciate it. All right, thank you. That brings us now to public hearing number two. I want to ask, it's 9:35, we have folks lined up for a time-specific item at 10 o'clock and then another at 10:30. Andy, is there flexibility, do you think, on the 10 o'clock presentation? Because I'm suspecting we are going to run a little past.
I'm looking at Kate.
What's my agenda?
Well, I think we have a public hearing, and if we proceed with the public hearing, we don't know exactly how long the comments will take. It may be that the comments go beyond 10. It's hard to say how much longer it would be.
Yeah, it's, I'm just guessing, so I'm just asking. We're going to proceed to the public hearing. We're not going to shuffle the agenda at this point, because it's been approved. I just think they need a heads up, if you don't mind, if that would be appropriate. So John, I'll turn it over to you for the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider a unified development ordinance text amendment pertaining to multifamily uses within the C2 district. On this matter, we'll begin with the staff's analysis presented by the Director of Planning and Development, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you so much. I'll go ahead and pull everything up on the screen so that we can look at it as we move through the report.
Kelly, can you pull the mic a little closer to yourself, please?
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. At their October 19th meeting, the NAGS Head Board of Commissioners adopted a moratorium on all non-residential development located within the C2 general commercial zoning district. And this was applicable to the areas between Danube Street and Hollowell Street, between US Highway 158 and NC 12. The moratorium does remain in effect through March 17th of 2023, and the moratorium was adopted to limit development in the historic character area, as that's been defined in the comprehensive land use plan, until the town can develop and implement appropriate standards for the development within this historic character area. Staff is actively conducting this review and analysis, and as part of the process, that includes whether multifamily is an appropriate use within this area. As the town considers the proper type and scope of uses in the historic character area, which is predominantly made up of single-family dwelling uses, the conversation will involve considering the propriety or feasibility of multifamily housing in various parts of the town, and to the extent that the use is appropriate or consistent with the areas of the town that are primarily residential in character. The town will want to determine which areas we would like to see developed as multifamily. We may also want to develop standards to incentivize multifamily in the appropriate locations. Currently, our standards for multifamily are broad, and our ordinance does not adequately address density criteria for uses that may be incompatible in these residential areas. In order to allow the town the necessary time to begin the process of developing standards to ensure that appropriate multifamily development can occur in the appropriate areas of town, the planning board has initiated and recommended adoption of a text amendment to the UDO that would eliminate multifamily development from the primary commercial zoning district within the town, which is the C2 general commercial district, until we can develop standards that are appropriate and that accomplish our goals and that are consistent with the land use plan. In your packet, we've listed our, the policy considerations from the 2017 comprehensive plan. I'll read those very, very quickly. LU4-D, identify existing cohesive residential areas that are currently zoned commercial and consider rezoning to residential to preserve their integrity and limit future land use compatibility issues. LU4-E, develop regulations that prevent incompatible commercial development adjacent to areas with historical designations or significance. LU9-B, evaluate all current commercial zoning districts based on this plan and the future land use map to determine if they are functioning as envisioned and make the necessary modifications. This should include a review of the existing C2 district and determine if the C1 or C4 district would be better suited than the current C2 zoning along NC 12, between the highways and along US 158, excluding major shopping center developments. And lastly, LU10-A, evaluate land uses specified in each district and further clarify which uses are appropriate, based on the intent of each district, their overall compatibility with current land uses, and the desired future development patterns. Based on this review, staff does recommend adoption of the proposed text amendment to the UDO as it's been presented. At their December 13th, 2022 meeting, the planning board both initiated and recommended adoption of the text amendment as it's been proposed. As you know, with any text amendment, there's a statement of consistency that needs to be made, and that's been included in your packet for your review. And what's on the screen is the proposed amendment in ordinance form. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? Anybody? All right, anything else, Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, ma'am. All right, at this time, members of the public who wish to comment on this proposed zoning ordinance text amendment and the amendment to the table of uses may do so. If you'll please approach the podium, tell us who you are and where you live, and address your comments to the board.
Good morning. My name is Basil Belches. My wife and I live at 3521 South Memorial Avenue in NAGS Head, which is in the old NAGS Head Place neighborhood, adjacent to the 4.7 acre lot on Hollowell that's targeted for the affordable housing apartments. Our neighborhood of Old NAGS Head Place is one of the neighborhoods that's listed in the 2017 Town Comprehensive Land Use Plan called a Neighborhood's Character Area. As mentioned in the moratorium from October 19th, the town desires to protect Neighborhood's Character Area and the Historic Character Area from incompatible land uses nearby. That includes multifamily development like apartments. This amendment we're talking about now will help preserve both of those areas. As such, I support the adoption of the amendment to the UDO that would eliminate multifamily, excuse me, multifamily development from the primary commercial zoning district, C2 general commercial. Additionally, while I know that emails are no longer allowed at the meetings, quite a few of our neighbors who can't be here today have submitted emails supporting the adoption of the amendment. Thanks for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Belches.
Good morning. My name is Clara McKenzie Smiley, and I'm here to speak against the WODA Cooper project, and I'd like to explain why. I've been coming to NAGS Head for close to 70 years, and that was beginning in the 1950s. In 1969, so that's 54 years ago, my father, Judge Henry McKenzie, bought some oceanfront property and hired Cliff Midget to build our cottage at 3621 South Virginia Dare Trail. That is a few houses down, a few cottages down from Hollowell Street and within the Historic Character Area. It has been our cherished second home for four generations now. I have very fond memories of Old NAGS Head in those early days. Mrs. Harris had the grocery store. I see some nods. That's where the NAGS Head Cafe is now. And everybody charged their goods to a paper and pen account and settled up periodically. I've actually seen that ledger in the town hall case. Jethro and Maddie Midget ran the nearby seafood shop, and Jimmy and Sandra Austin opened Austin Sea Market in 1960. The beach road was the main road we used, even though the bypass had been built. It was a neighborhood then, as it is now, characterized by well-maintained, single-family cottages and supported by family-run businesses. The town made sure that there were no multifamily structures, which we see in the towns to our north. Everybody knew and looked out for each other, and that's the way we do it today. It's safe to say that my father would not have chosen that property if multi-tenant apartments had been in this neighborhood. In his mind, the historic cottages and the people who lived in them made the place special. That is why this is designated an Historic Character Area. The WODA Cooper project would change the very character of our neighborhood in ways that would not be in keeping with what we and our neighbors had invested in and want to preserve for future generations. We strongly favor rezoning to commercial C2 to eliminate the possibility of multi-tenant projects being built there. We are acutely aware of the need for housing for lower-income residents of NAGS Head, especially for those people who work here, and would support certain locations within the town to accommodate this particular population. Thank you all very much for seriously considering the repercussions of this project on our historic neighborhood and for investigating other more appropriate locations. And Happy New Year to all.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley.
Bear with me, I've got a little bit of a raspy voice. I'm here with my wife, Chris. We're from New Jersey. We're looking to retire at 3519 South Memorial Road, and I can't compete with the young lady who just spoke. I've been coming here for 40 years. I bought my first home 10 years ago, and I'm looking to settle here. And when I heard about the WODA project, I was very surprised and disappointed, and I regained faith, because I think your moratorium was a terrific first step. We're in favor of changing the zoning of the commercial C2 area to eliminate high-density housing. We'd even prefer further getting it to a residential, which I think is a phase of this, reexamining the location of this. So we just, again, I would like to express gratitude for that consideration. And it's just not intended as a gripe. We're sensitive to the need of supporting the businesses. I've owned multiple privately-held businesses my whole life, but I'm just saying you've got to optimize where you put that high-density housing. And I think if you scrutinize Dare County, there's a lot of alternatives, local and even further away. And it just, I thought it was unfortunate how this seemed to come to play, and I just felt it pertinent you should hear about people. And I drove down from New Jersey last night just to express it, and I hope you continue with the logic. And thank you for the lady who spoke, because I really appreciate her perspective. All right? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Campanelli.
My name is Richard Hanson. My wife, Mellyn, I live at 3323 South Mendelane. And I'm here, and I don't want to take everybody's time, but we really support what the planning board recommended, the support of the rezoning of C2 area that lies within the historical character area. And I encourage you to keep the great work up and preserve the charm and character that NAGS Head has and has a special place in our heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Debbie McConnell. My husband Brendan and I reside, or have a home at 3622 South Virginia Dare Trail. The project would be directly behind us. I did send an email to the board yesterday outlining five or six points, including the Historic Character Area concerns. But I'm here today just to emphasize, for those that say it's a "not in my backyard" concern, for us, it's what we see in our front yard. We have significant flooding after, really, any rainstorm between Hollowell and Conch on the beach road. The ponding on the sidewalk in the shoulder that we live on with the grass requires us to actually exit our driveway with a car to not ruin our shoes. But a side effect of this is that pedestrian traffic, I have seen, especially since 7-Eleven was completed, they walk in the road to avoid these ponds. It concerns me of such a large development behind us, for not only the people that would live there, but also all the hardscape that would take place that would cause more drainage in this area. So I support the adoption of this amendment to limit this type of development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. All right, does anybody else wish to be heard at the, for this public hearing? Yes, sir.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Mike Mishu, and I live at 3427 South Memorial Avenue. I recently retired from local government in Northern Virginia, so I'm very familiar with how the UDO works and also with the strategic planning that goes into the comprehensive land use plan. I encourage the board to continue to follow that plan and have our Historic Character Area... Area further established by supporting and eliminating the multi-use, the multifamily use from the C2 zoning. Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Missu.
My name is Bobby Harrell. I live in Roanoke, Allen, but I've owned and operated a business in Nags Head for the past 20 years, just located in a C2 zone. One of the reasons I wanted to speak this morning, too, was I feel like the multifamily elimination from the C2 zone is directed at the potential essential housing project. I'd like to stress again how critical that media is. I know there's some businesses that may not need that. You know, the town's indicated that it doesn't fit the needs of the town, but also in research, we've identified that a hospital alone needs 40 units for housing. And if we expect to have good, solid healthcare in the future, we need to be able to house these employees that'll take care of us. Elimination of multifamily in a C2 zone will affect most any area that will accommodate multifamily housing for central housing. One concern I have is that I attended the Planning Board meeting on December 13th. I did not see the proposed elimination of C2, multifamily in C2 zoning on the agenda. I left about two-thirds of the way through for another appointment. It concerns me that that was proposed on December 13th and potentially voted on today. The public in general, people that have C2 zoning, I don't feel like they've been given proper notice to study and understand what effect this would have, because typically any time there's an elimination of a use in a zoning, it will decrease the property value. Having been a broker for 40 years, I understand that. So I would ask the town, if they would, to consider extending the vote for another 30 days to give ample time for the public to understand and study what effect it'll have them, anyone that does have C2 zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Yes, sir.
I barely passed my public speaking class, so bear with me. None of my partners wanted to do it, so I got the short straw. My name is Peter Pinto. I have a home in Duck, in addition to multiple properties from Carova to God knows where on the Outer Banks. Me and my partners have been a loyal and cooperative group for all of this time, and we own multiple properties that are in the C2 district. Our existing projects have been positively received by the Nags Head community. These include the Tarheel Motel and the Sugar Creek condominiums, among others. All of our projects, excuse me, have been completed with the cooperation and desire of the town of Nags Head, and we intend to continue this cooperation. We are aware that certain people are not in favor of certain properties being developed to certain uses in Nags Head. I am not here to opine on said projects. I will agree with what Mr. Harrell just said about the timing of the text amendment. I think we're all aware this is holiday season, and frankly, we were taken by surprise that this was put in at the time and manner in which it was. We are further concerned that this doesn't have an adverse effect on the value and uses of our properties. I reiterate, we have multiple properties in the C2 zone that will be affected. We have made significant good-faith investments in these properties, which includes large amount of property tax payments, which we recently made because we had to scramble to come up with all the money. We have development plans currently in progress with the town. Again, we made significant expenditure of time, money, and resources in good faith based on the uses that were approved in the town when we purchased the property. We want to make sure that property rights, good faith, follow, that the North Carolina Sunshine laws are followed, and basic fairness and equity are respected, and I'm certain that they will be. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Pinto.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time. I'm Mayor Hooper, resident of Kitty Alton, North Carolina, owner of multiple businesses down here. I think the board needs to consider the fact, if I read this correctly, what y'all are proposing would eliminate any multifamily housing type scenario in the town of Nags Head. I'm not sure if that's exactly correct, but if that is true, you're eliminating the ability to increase some of the workforce housing, not to mention detrimentally hurting land value in the C2, I believe. So please just consider this. I understand the issues on both sides, but it is unfair to totally eliminate something on this basis.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Does anybody else wish to be heard in this public hearing? Does the board wish to receive any further information regarding the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment before you begin your deliberations? If not, at this time, we will conclude the public hearing, and the board may deliberate on this proposal.
All right. Thank you. I think the best thing that we could do is go ahead and get a motion on the floor so that we can have a proper discussion about this, so I would entertain a motion.
For the purposes of discussion, discussion only. I'll make a motion that we approve as presented.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, and understand that, and appreciate Commissioner Brinkley, your willingness to put it on the table. So commissioners, any comments? What are your thoughts? Start at my left with Commissioner Sears.
One question for Attorney Light. Anybody that has a legitimate, proposed, fully documented permit in the process, would this affect them at all?
This would, there's a variety of developments that could be, they could have vested rights. If permits have been issued, if approvals have been issued and so forth, would not be affected by this. But land that is within the zoning district that is, could be used for this kind of development, but no applications have been submitted, no permits have been issued, no approvals have been issued, would be affected by this. That's correct.
Just want a clarification on that for anybody that, as Mr. Pinto said, he already has permits out there for something. I just wanted to make sure that he was covered.
Thank you. Commissioner Cahoon.
Thank you. Appreciate the Planning Board and Planning Staff taking this step. While I agree that it's probably not going to be happy with everybody, I don't see this as a long-term process. I think we're just trying to get our zoning ordinance and zoning maps in order, and this is merely part of the process that we're going to use to do that. Do I see this as a permanent step? Probably not. I think we all recognize the need to have a more diverse housing selection, whether it's multifamily or whether it's other types of housing in our town. So I take this as one step that we're taking in order to try to give staff the opportunity to bring in better definitions. We don't even have a definition of multifamily housing overall.
No.
So we've got a lot of work to do on our end, and this is a step that I support taking in order to do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Brinkley.
I appreciate both Mayor Protem and Commissioner Cahoon on their comments. Something that was mentioned about the Sunshine Law, and I know from working here for 30 years, the town has always prided itself on being transparent. That was a concern to me when I heard that, and I just wanted to clarify what the reporting or what the notification standards are for a public hearing, what is our requirement to the public.
Well, for zoning public hearing, I mean, John can certainly cover this, but we're required to publish a notice at least twice, the first one being at least 10 days from the date of the hearing, and those notices have all been completed.
So we did our due diligence for that.
Of course, we completed a public notice requirement, certainly.
And I couldn't agree with Commissioner Cahoon more that we have, we need work on our end, looking at some of the definitions that we've got. It contradicts itself in different areas of the ordinance, and I never, it just needs some work, and I think this will give staff the time to do that. And no, I don't think that it's going to be anything permanent, but I do think we need time to get it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really don't know if I can add too much more. I mean, obviously, it is not going to be anything that is going to be permanent. I think it's something that we really need to look at, and I think it will give staff time to do so, so.
Thank you. You know, I'm opposed to this motion, and I think it's incumbent upon me to say why. The multifamily in C2 has been a longstanding use. I think it predates much of the development that's sprung up around the C2, the fact that multifamily is permitted there. And we're taking an essential use off the map and off the table for a large area of the town. The C2 is not just the area that's been referenced repeatedly. C2 is virtually everything between the highways in the town and much of what borders 158 on the west side of the highway. And I understand that we will probably put this back, but we're taking it off the table without a guarantee that we're putting it back. And, you know, it, to me, we've had these rules in place. We've had, you know, those in place so that folks can make a good-faith investment in the town, and it's unfortunate, the timing, I agree. We did our due diligence and all of our notice. There's nothing nefarious about this, but it feels to me a little precipitous to take this action at this time, and so I think that's enough for me. Any further comments from the board? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the table to approve the Planning Board's recommendation for removal of multifamily from C2. There's no further discussion, then all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Nay. Thank you.
Mayor, I need also, did the motion include the statement of consistency?
No, we need to adopt that statement of consistency as well.
Make a motion to adopt the statement of consistency as referenced. Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Nay. Thank you. And we actually managed to get to our 10 o'clock time-specific item. Let's take, if we can, let's just take a five-minute recess so that folks can leave. So the board will be in recess for just about five minutes. All right. The board has returned from its recess, and we will now go to item G2, which is time-specific, a presentation on the draft shoreline management plan. Kate, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Here today to introduce the draft shoreline management plan that you have in front of you. We do not, of course, expect you to go through that at this meeting, but moreover, I wanted to just give a brief introduction, and then Jessica Norris from Biohabitats and Don York from Moffett Nickel are going to be giving a short presentation just to summarize the project and the process. So they will be joining us via Zoom shortly. There they are. But I'll just give a quick introduction, and as you all know, Bob Sanders has been sitting on our committee as the representative from the board, and we appreciate his participation in the process. And this process began about 14 months ago, and it was identified as something that the town wanted to undertake in our comprehensive plan and through the VCAPS process, and we'll get into that. But today, we have worked through 14 months of feedback from the public and also advisory committee meetings. We've had five of those, and what we have in front of us is a document, a thorough document, that classifies existing shoreline types, identifies potential solutions that would be appropriate for existing shorelines. It also identifies 10 potential project areas that were determined by staff and through input, and then narrowed down to three estuarine shoreline projects that were taken through the conceptual level for design. So we have Jessica Norris and Don York here to go through just a summary of the project for you today, and if you have any questions throughout this process, please just ask. We want it to be open-ended. I will just close this out by saying, the hope here is that you take the next three and a half weeks to review the document in front of you. You also have a copy of the engineering report if you so desire to kind of read the nitty-gritty of some of the modeling that was done. You have that in front of you. If you do have any comments or feedback, you can call me, you can come in, you can write it in an email, but three and a half weeks, I'm available whenever you want to sit down and talk through some things. And the goal, the goal would be that potentially it would come back in a final form for adoption in February. That would be the goal. So, okay, well, I'll hand it over to Jessica Norris from Biohabitats and Don York from Moffett Nickel.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I assume my audio is working just fine?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. All right. Now, it doesn't look like I can see the slides on the Zoom, so I'm going to actually indicate when I'd like them to be advanced, if that's okay.
Sure.
All right. So on the, just to start off, it's a pleasure to be here. This has been a very exciting project to work on, and Moffett Nickel, my colleague, Don, who's joining me today, and Biohabitats, my firm, has had a really stimulating and interesting time working on this. And I want to just mention quickly that as consultants who work with a bunch of different municipalities, it's really been exceptional to see some of the efforts by y'all's staff, both in terms of the energy and the vision that they bring to this problem and the solutions, but especially to the partnerships that they've cultivated, which y'all have cultivated over what's obviously years and years, because some of the people they brought to the table and the calls and collaborations that they've been able to activate have been really exceptional in my experience. On the next slide, I think Kate already mentioned, we wanted to just make sure that we have a shared understanding of how grounded this is in previous processes. So the VCAPS study really brought estuarine shoreline management to the fore, and it wasn't until the 2020 grant by the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation that we were able to, you know, move forward into this process. So this is, this plan has been funded by the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and we'll return to a couple, you know, mentions of them and their interest and their future interest towards the end of the presentation. On the next slide, I mentioned this, that we've been, and Kate did, to talk about the amount of stakeholder engagement. The Board of Commissioners, of course, actually approved and appointed the 20 people who are on the advisory committee, and that includes representing- on the advisory committee, and that includes representatives of the residents of the estuarine shoreline and recreational uses, and these other major stakeholders who have big chunks of land on the estuarine shoreline, the Nature Conservancy, Jockeys Ridge, the golf course, and the Dare County Tourism Board has been collaborating with us quite a bit. We've had conversations with NCDOT. And the really substantive partnerships, two of them, that we've been able to benefit from throughout this process is with the Coastal Studies Institute from ECU and the North Carolinian Coastal Federation, which have both been generous with their technical input, as has the Nature Conservancy. But some of those last people especially were involved in the, we convened sort of an expert workshop of our internal people, but the team of shoreline experts that we've worked with across the country, from, you know, some engineers from California and around. And so your community hasn't, your community engagement hasn't just been us telling people. They've actually been at the table in some of the design shreds, et cetera. So you're pretty close to on time, which congratulations, having led a public meeting. But I am going to go a little quick. So my goal here is to really focus on some of the why of the solutions that you can review at your leisure in the document. So I'm not going to spend too much time going through the details of the final concepts, and I want to also make sure we leave time for questions or queries, so I'll let you direct where the attention goes. But as a preface, I'd like to really examine three kind of overarching questions that are overarching issues that are going to inform all of the decisions and recommendations that you'll see brought forward in that document. So on the next slide, I think, you know, the point I want to make sure that everyone shares, because we've seen from some of the public input that people are surprised to realize how severe some of the land loss has been. So this is an example from near Soundside Road, where you've experienced about 500 feet of shoreline loss since 1950, or 500 feet of depth. You've lost 500 feet of land, not just shoreline. And I think it's important, and we tried to sort of lay out in the report, some of the foundational or some of the underlying causes of that. So there's been a lot of, there's a lot of different dynamics that are at play here, but there's, historically, the way the barrier islands erosion is a natural part of barrier islands, you know, existence. But some of the processes that counteract it, like overwash from the oceanside, have been paused or stopped by, you know, human changes to Nags Head. So it's important to realize, like, just how much land is being lost. And you can see it, of course, in flooding issues as well. On the next slide, I wanted to get into a little overview of the why this is so focused on nature-based solutions, because this plan, this entire plan is driven by the concept that nature-based solutions are the focus, are the first effort for restoration of the shoreline and protection of your shoreline. One big reason for this is back to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, who is your funder, who has a particular interest in nature-based solutions. But the reason they're interested in it, and the reason that all the feds are now also interested in it, is because of some of the benefits that they offer. And this is important also because it's going to change, if you're focusing on some nature-based solutions, then it's going to open up avenues of funding into the future of implementing this that are not available to traditional bulkhead protection. So in this figure, you can see sort of a contrast between a plain, straight-walled bulkhead and a more natural shoreline. And the most important thing about the difference between these two approaches is the way that wave energy refracts or reflects or is absorbed in the two. So on the top, when you have a gradual slope and the wave energy comes in, whether it's a big storm event or if it's just day-to-day, you know, wave action from winds, a lot of that wave energy is actually absorbed, and the water is very quiet close to shore. And when it's coming in against a constructed bulkhead, the wave energy is reflected back, and it has, there's a series of effects of that reflected wave energy, including scouring down deeper. So bulkheads tend to get, the bed actually tends to get deeper in front of bulkheads. You can also create that turbulence around the edges, so the areas next to bulkheads tend to get extra turbulent. And maybe one of the most important is that you lose accretion. So in the first, in the top scenario, when the water is up very close to the water line, in the marsh, that's a very quiet condition. And this idea of accretion is going to come up important later, which is why I'm spending time on it. But if the water is quiet, then all of that sediment and material can settle out of the water, out of the water column. So a natural marsh, like a salt marsh in general, can actually sort of keep up with sea level rise by accreting land in some conditions, depending on how much sediment load there is in the water. And that condition of being able to trap material in plant roots is also a really important part of the nature-based shorelines that we're going to be, you know, proposing and recommending for some of the solutions for you. There's also some trade-offs in terms of habitat value and water quality. So that, in the lower scenario, where you're constantly resuspending sediment and you've got a lot of churning of material on the bottom, on the floor of the sound, you're also going to be releasing phosphorus probably, or other toxins from the urban environment into the, into the water column. Whereas if they are trapped and stabilized by vegetation, those pollutants can be removed. So on the next slide is the third sort of big idea of why or explanatory preface that I wanted to hit, which is that one of the most striking things about this system, and we've worked in, you know, a lot of areas without this kind of driver, is that Jockey Ridge, we don't want it to blow away, we don't want it to be washing away, but there's a lot of material coming off Jockey's Ridge. And it's really an interesting and important driver of the system, because as the dune is shedding some of its sand, and you can see these from space, just plumes of sand coming down your coastline, it really got us all very interested in thinking about the big drivers of the system and the big solutions that could be out there. Because if you can trap some of that material instead of just letting it wash down to the inlet, you might be able to help some of that land loss that you're experiencing. All right, so I know I just spent about half my time on basically preface, so forgive me, I'm going to go, I'm going to speed up and go through some of the solutions that have come up in the plan, and touch on them lightly, and then try to get back to questions if y'all have some discussion points before retreating to consider it over the next three and a half weeks or more. So the first, the first concept, the first recommended tool in the toolkit is living shorelines. And this is in the, in the top left, you can see a conceptual sort of explanation of how these can work. There's a lot of different ways to configure living shorelines, but they're always going to have something to stop the wave energy, some sort of breakwater farther out, and then a planted vegetation on a, on a more gentle slope behind. And so the best, well, I haven't seen every living shoreline in North Carolina, but the best living shoreline I've ever seen in North Carolina is right in Nags Head in front of Jockey's Ridge. And part of the reason is because you've got that really reliable supply of sand and material coming in, and you're actually very clearly building land out towards the breakwater. So if you get a chance, or you're curious or interested about it, there's, there's a lot of partners and people who would be happy to show you how that living shoreline works and what it's been doing for the shoreline right in front of Jockey's Ridge. So living shorelines is an important tool in the toolkit. On the next slide, you know, we're, one of the really striking things is that you've already got a lot of bulkheads, you know, installed along Nags Head. And so, you know, what we're, we started to think about is various ways that you might be able to modify or incorporate into regular maintenance, or like when you're having to replace one of these bulkheads, or think about changing it, modify some softer solutions or greener solutions to incorporate vegetation and get some of those benefits of the natural shoreline, even where you do have bulkheads. So there's a couple different ways to do this that are described in the plan under the section and under the idea of making greener bulkheads, in terms of creating areas for vegetation in front of them, or in other ways, making that surface more complex so that it can absorb more of the wave energy is a big theme of those. On the next slide, another sort of idea or concept, a tool in the toolkit, a shoreline solution that we highlight is resiliency terraces. This is a technique that's sort of like a, what you're trying to do is soften that shore and give yourself a more gradual slope from the open water to the land, so make the transition not quite so 90 degrees abrupt, and offer some of those benefits that are conferred by the plants and the different types of marsh plants that you can support in that sort of scenario. Now, returning to, on the next one, in open water designs, we're really returning to some of the ideas that I was trying to introduce by talking about the drivers that you have in terms of all of the material that washes down the shoreline of Nags Head. And so it, because you've got some material to trap, we really started looking harder, not at this parcel-by-parcel approach, but by overarching things that you could do that would protect much larger swaths of shoreline and change some of the system dynamics that need to change in order to halt that land loss. So maybe the most valuable part of this is the, sort of, on the right-hand side, that like 1, 2, 3, the little, that's a diagram of what one of these living breakwaters could be. So this would be, and they're more detailed as you go further into the report, but conceptually, we really wanted to start thinking about what you could do out in the water instead of right next to the shoreline, or in complement to right next to the shoreline. Because if you can control some of that wave energy coming in from, you know, across the sound, then it's going to make any of your nearshore shoreline treatments more effective and more, more successful. Okay, so with that, I'm not going to sort of review the structure of the report, because I figure you can read the table of contents and you'll have that. But just to really quickly recap, we tried to look at the existing conditions, what's causing some of the dynamics that we see, looking at sort of organizing the kinds of shoreline you have into a typology system, thinking about the different tools that can be applied to different segments of shoreline and which typologies they are appropriate for. And then we really moved, I guess in the early summer, into the final phase of the plan, which was to develop concept-level drawings and concept-level considerations for shoreline work and stabilization at the sites that Kate was mentioning. So we started off with a suite of 11. Are you looking at the picture with all the little dots on it?
Yeah, so we're actually looking at the selected project locations. We might just want to review those.
Great. So we, we sort of ended up, especially with that thought of moving further offshore to think about more comprehensive strategies, we ended up grouping some of these areas. And so broadly, they are from up by Villa Dunes and Nags Head Woods, and then a long stretch along Soundside Road, and then finally, the public-owned land down at the Harvey site. And we've been working closely with the Dare County Board of Tourism there, too.
Great.
There you go. So this is, just to make sure you know this was a public process, that we did, there was votes and assessments and criteria to figure out which, which sites to work on. So we did heavily weight towards, you know, publicly on land, since that's a place you can take action, you know, without working with a broader swath of landowners, but it does include areas that would be affected by, or privately held property that would be affected.
Okay.
So the first concept that we'll mention is the Nags Head Woods Preserve and Villa Dunes Drive. I am going to go pretty fast on these, but in short, the overarching concept here is to work out in the water, get offshore down to two, two or three feet of depth, and work on those living breakwaters, so that from the shore, when you look out, you would see sort of a gentle rise of marsh, and you could have those quiet, more accreting sorts of conditions behind the breakwaters. And from the front, again, you would have more structural stability in terms of harder material, the rock on the front, but you can still see the grasses and a marshy sort of look to the way that these breakwaters would be designed. So these are featured, again, in the next slide, the next concept area, which is on Soundside Road. Now, on Soundside Road, you have a lot of complications from private, privately-owned docks, and the, there's, you can't really work in the same way offshore. So there's a couple places where we're thinking about those breakwater structures. And then there's another concept, which is detailed sort of in the lower portion of this slide, which is a gentler rolling back and stabilization of the shorefront, which is in a slightly different color, green, but it actually is stretching all along Soundside Road in terms of trying to stabilize that area with something other than riprap. And then the third concept development is down at the Harvey Sound Access. And this is, you know, a much more complicated spot, and it's got a lot more eyes on it. It's got, which gives it some interesting opportunities for, you know, education outreach. But it's also got a proposed boardwalk from the Dare County Board of Tourism right now. I'm sure y'all are familiar with this, but the gazebo and the boardwalks that are proposed to be working alongside that site are incorporated into our design or this concept-level treatment of the area, trying to, one of the, one of the issues that's pressing here is that where there is some natural shoreline and marsh, there's a lot of recreational access, which is causing erosion. And so one of the issues we're trying to work with here is to formalize some places where people can access the water in the way that they're used to, but then protect other areas so that the erosion is not as severe. All right, so I think I left very little time to, to mention what I wanted to about implementation and next steps. There's a section of the document entitled "Implementation and Next Steps" that talks about some of the things we don't know but would need to know to get more specific about timeframes and, you know, which, which kinds of materials. In terms of funding, there's a lot of, there's a lot of interest in this kind of thing right now, and I think that Nags Head is very well positioned, you know, as being out in front of some of the estuarine shoreline natural solutions and bulkhead modifications. These are all topics of interest in the funding community, both at the state and federal level, and private, actually. There's some private foundations that are keen to see these sort of solutions implemented at stale, at scale. And I'll just say briefly that we have, we have, we had a preliminary scoping meeting with the perimeters, which you can find out more about in the plan or through conversations with us. And then the last point I just wanted to bring up is that originally, I think in the VCAPS process, and maybe even in the goals, original goals of this, we had talked about some of the regulatory opportunities or tools that are in use in other municipalities, especially where towns and governments are looking at regulating, incentivizing natural shorelines, incentivizing native plant use, incentivizing larger buffer setbacks, and so that the infrastructure is better protected from the very edge, or, you know, creating ordinances to govern the way that people put in bulkheads and where they can do it and what kinds of materials, et cetera, that they can use. So that's a conversation that we did not get into in this document and in this exercise. We're really focused on sort of the engineering problem solving, but it's something that could very well happen in parallel as you move forward. And that's where I'm
Great, thank you.
Wrapping up, I think there's another slide with Kate's contact.
Yes, there's a contact slide. Well, thank you, Jessica. Appreciate that recap. Does any of the board have any questions at this time? I know that was a lot, and you have a large document ahead of you. We did make sure there were nice pictures to keep you in it, so if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. I mean, the board's been excited about this, and I think we're glad to get to this point. And I will give, since Commissioner Sanders has been serving on this committee, I'll give you the first opportunity to amplify anything that's in the report or make any comments or questions.
I don't have any questions. This was just an amazing project to be part of. Thank everybody for their hard work and their research and their planning. They put a lot into this. A lot of good things have come out of it. I mean, I've definitely loved the nature-based solutions and the living shorelines, and as Jessica mentioned, the Harvey site could give a good chance for universities and local schools to have a study program of this project, so it's, it's very good. I'm excited about it, really excited.
That would be neat. Kevin, any questions?
No questions, but thank you for your work.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Commissioner Cahoon.
Thank you. Really good presentation, very interested in seeing how it works out. Of course, I'm really more interested in nature-based solutions. I think bulkheads just don't accomplish a lot, especially for neighbors if, that all If, all they do is encourage other neighbors to bulkhead because otherwise their property's going to erode. The one question I do have is, as part of this process, did you determine in the erosion process, were there major storm events that caused the most erosion, or was it just gradual over time erosion?
That's a good question. I think mainly what we saw through the data collection and modeling process and then the historical review of storms is that the actual day-to-day wind events from the dominant directions probably had the most effect, and certain storms, depending on which way they approached. But I think we're all, through this process, I was somewhat aware, but definitely after looking at the dominant wind directions, more aware that a substantial blow from the southwest continually can have almost as much damage as a storm that rolls up, you know, tropical system or something like that. So I think it all has an effect, but the day-to-day winds really have a dramatic effect.
And I noticed that some of your slides have hardened structures, but they also have soft features in them
Right.
To allow for natural processes to occur as well.
Right.
Have you ever taken a look as part of the process, they're called Bobjacks?
Bobjacks.
Yeah, they're done in Europe a lot
Okay.
At harbors, but they actually are concrete structures that have holes all through them
Right.
That look like Bobjacks, and they kind of
Okay.
Will roll and tumble a little bit until they lock together.
Mm-hmm.
And then they allow wave energy to be dissipated while still allowing movement of sand, fish, and different things to go through.
Well, that's interesting.
Yeah, that's a, there's a little section on the reef balls that operate on a kind of similar principle because they're perforated. So the way the waves come in, the reef balls, and actually, there's another, the Atlantic Reef Maker Designs are also trying to distribute the wave energy in different ways, and it's similar principle, they're not exactly, they're analogous, I guess, in some ways to the Bobjacks.
No, I think that's a good point, though, that concept of the materials with, you know, allowing spaces in between are really beneficial for habitat and, you know, creatures to latch on to. And that's what you miss with a hardened
Exactly.
Structure without that.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Sears.
No questions. Thanks for your work, Kate, and all those involved.
Yep.
Looking forward to our homework. Glad you gave us some visuals.
Thank you, Commissioner Cahoon. You've been talking about this approach to the shoreline since we started serving on the board together. So appreciate that, getting that ball rolling.
Okay, thank you. And don't hesitate to reach out with comments, questions, as in the next few weeks.
Very good, thank you.
You know where to find us.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jessica and Dawn.
That brings us to our next time specific item, which is Item H1 under New Business, which is our report from our auditors. And I'll call Amy to the podium, please.
Emily said she was waiting. Okay. Good morning again. This year was our first year with our new auditors, Potter &amp; Company. It's been a great experience and a really wonderful professional resource for myself. Earlier in the meeting on the consent, the board approved the audit contract for fiscal year '23, so we're already looking ahead. And Emily Mills, who is a partner with Potter &amp; Company, is going to be doing our audit presentation today, and she's on our Zoom right now. So I'll let her give her presentation, and if you have any questions, we'll both be here to answer them. So thank you, Emily.
Thanks, Amy. Can you hear me okay?
Yep. We can.
Okay. Again, my name is Emily Mills, and I'm a partner with Potter &amp; Company. And I'm pleased to be here this morning to present the town's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. First of all, I just want to thank the town for allowing our firm to provide this service, and also wanted to commend the work of the finance team. Amy and Brooke and everyone there were super helpful, professional, and just a wonderful staff to work with. They should all be highly commended for their efforts to get this report completed. So on page one of the financial statements is our independent auditor's report, and we have issued an unmodified opinion on the statements for the town. This unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance that we, as independent auditors, can issue, and it states that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, and it is commonly referred to as a clean opinion. In addition to the auditor's report, there's also a group of reports on the town's compliance, and those are found in the compliance section, which is near the back of your financial statements, and they start on page 138. And these reports deal with the town's compliance with governmental auditing standards in addition to the compliance of its federal and state programs with various federal and state laws and regulations. We did have one finding that we consider to be a significant deficiency. This relates to the budget violation for leases. So GASB 87 was implemented this year, and that is the lease standard, and it required a change in presentation for lease payments, and this generated a budget violation due to the reclassification of those lease payments. The financial statements were submitted to the LGC on November the 30th, and the LGC approved these statements on December the 14th with no comments. However, due to the over-budget debt service item related to the leases, the town does need to submit a response to auditor's findings, recommendations, and fiscal matters to the LGC within 60 days of today's presentation. And that should be signed by a majority of the board, the manager, and the finance officer. This is a new process that the LGC implemented beginning last year. And examples for this letter are also available on the LGC's website. Is there any questions?
Let's check with the board here, and I'll start on my left, I think. Commissioner Sears.
No questions.
Commissioner Cahoon.
No.
Mr. Brinkley. Commissioner Sanders. All right. We, no questions, thank you.
Again, thank you for this opportunity.
All right, thank you. Amy, any follow-up?
No, I just wanted to thank Emily, and I just wanted to let the board know that we did take care of that violation by doing a budget amendment in November to address the leases. So we, what happened is leases are now considered a debt payment rather than an operating expense, and I didn't do that budget amendment in time. So we've already taken care of that this year, and we'll follow up with that letter to the LGC. I just wanted to thank Emily and her staff for their help. We have submitted the ACFA, our financial statements, to the GFOA, and we have received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for our fiscal year '21 ACFA. So hopefully, we will continue that streak with the help of Emily and her staff. So I thank the board for their support, and we'll look forward to next year. We're working on that already.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Mayor, may I ask a question of Amy?
Certainly.
Amy, as part of our upcoming budget process, would you make sure that included in the information given to the board, the amount of the liability for the pensions, the long-term liability for the pensions, we get notified of that? I know it's in our audit, but make sure that we're all aware of that. It needs to stay front and center, that we're aware of that long-term debt.
Okay, I think I've actually received that report already, so we can send that to the board. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. That will take us back now up to Item F3. We'll get back on our sort of regular agenda, which is a public hearing to consider various text amendments. Kate?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, at this time, we will open the public hearing to consider the various text amendments to the UDO pertaining to the tree preservation/ removal regulations within the town. And we'll begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis presented by Kate Jones.
Thank you. Good, still morning. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I am here to present to you the updated tree regulations, including not only the regulations, but as requested by both the Commissioners and the Planning Board, a consolidated appendix to make getting through these regulations a bit easier, so you have that in front of you. I just wanted to read, I'm not going to go through every single change, but I thought what I'd do is just summarize the generality of what's in front of you. I did want to just start by saying, and many of you know this already, why trees are important. They provide numerous environmental health and community benefits. Trees provide food and habitat for wildlife, but they also filter groundwater, stabilize soils, reduce surface runoff, which is something we all deal with a lot in this town. They also sequester carbon and can in some ways reduce energy consumption with the shade they provide. So overall, the benefits of trees highlight the need to protect some tree canopy that we do have left. So the main charge, and this has been, you know, six months, eight months, 10 months, we've been talking about this, but members of the board expressed an interest in considering changes to the UDO and overall town regulations to clarify the town's language as relates to tree preservation and remedies for removal as well. And the tree regulations are really spread out throughout our code. But I'll start with the sections that do pertain, and they're in your memo, too, so I won't, you know, hit on them too specifically, but the first one, the official town tree, this has been a longstanding part of our town code. And really, the main changes here are clarifying where you measure, and this is something you're going to find throughout these changes, changing to be more of a in line with the current standards from a foot above the ground to just diameter breast height. That is really the standard, most arborists use in measuring of trees. I will also add that moving from measuring the tree from the bottom to the trunk actually gives someone a little more leeway, because if you think about it, the trunk is bigger than the breast height. So it does give you a little more leeway there. With the tree, with the town tree, what, because it is a town tree, we would suggest expanding that to all zoning districts, as well as clarifying how you replace and remove trees, which we've done through a table. The main thing here is, their ordinance itself was very difficult to navigate. We wanted to separate tree removal during an active construction project versus just tree removal, and it was really hard to know what to do or enforce our ordinance without that designation. So we've specified that as well. And we've also specified a fine for removal, very simple process. So if any of you have any questions about that, or we can hold questions to the end, but if you have any questions about that town tree section, Section 269, please let me know. Really, the other sections are more of just, again, clarifying where you measure a tree as well as, you know, referring to that Table A for, well, you've removed a tree, so now what? Replacement. We've tried to give a wide variety up to a year for replacement, knowing that, you know, sometimes you just don't want to plant a tree in the middle of the summer. It's just not a smart idea. So people would have that flexibility for over a year to plant a tree. And then I wanted to also point out that in the SPD 20, which is one of the two special zoning districts we have in our town, the other, of course, being the SED 80 residential, there was some inconsistencies between the SED and SPD 20 for the perimeter around structures that was allowed for tree removal during an active building project. So we actually expanded that perimeter from 10 feet to 20 feet in the SPD 20, and that actually matches and mirrors the SED 80. So it made more sense, and just being on active construction projects, you really do need a little more room around accessory buildings, and main buildings as well. So I just wanted to point that out. Now, those two are matched to the 20-foot perimeter around a building site. So I wanted to point that out. Again, it also points out exactly what to do for replacement and which type, you know, which type of trees, it clearly, just clearly lays everything out for removal and replacement. Those are really the bulk of the changes. We haven't added any new section or ordinance or anything like that. It's really, as you know, just kind of working with what we have and then consolidating it. That appendix is really just meant to be a document someone can look at quickly and kind of get a feel for how they can lay out their site plan and what they need to be thinking about, but also if they just have a property in one of the special zoning districts, you know, what would they need to be thinking about for removal? We've clearly laid out, you know, diseased, dying trees. Planning staff has the ability to go check those out and make the call. If planning staff feels like an arborist is needed, we can go there, but, you know, it's really up to planning staff, so.
All right, thank you. For questions? Board members, Commissioner Brinkley, I know you identified a concern that you had when we first saw this a while ago, and so I'll turn to you first for any comments or questions.
Kate, and thank you for this and clarified a lot. Something I really appreciate, changing the 10 feet to the 20 feet around the edge of a structure. I think that's certainly needed. I'd found some information online dealing specifically with live oaks that suggested that they not be any closer than 30 feet, especially to a foundation, where if they were upended, then it could damage the foundation. But I think 20 feet, that's
Yeah.
That's great, so I appreciate that.
We agree.
My other question is the treetopping. We went from the 25% canopy to where just, it's treetopping.
Yeah, simplified.
When I looked up that definition, it really wasn't clear, but it gave me pictures of examples of treetopping. How, what is your definition of treetopping and what that would look like? Just so it's good in my mind.
Right, right. So I actually put that in the appendix
Right.
As a definition, and provided a link that also has some pictures. But basically, it's when you cut back the tree, the tree branches to stubs or lateral branches. So it really just kind of looks like a trunk with like some little, just some little appendages, and that's it.
Understood.
Sometimes it's just the trunk. So, but I did provide a link
I'm sorry.
In there, so, because I know there's, I mean, that's a good question. Well, what is the treetopping? So people can go read the definition, then they can click on that link and see pictures of exactly what is considered treetopping.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your help on that.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to jump around. Commissioner Cahoon, you brought an example of tree mangling to the board a while ago.
I did. That started a little bit of this. Thank you very much for the work. I hope that the people that just want to use a view shed don't mangle up all the trees. That started a lot of this, was new people moving into a neighborhood and destroying the mature trees that were there because they wanted a better view. We really want to keep our trees. They do an important service. I wish everybody wouldn't clearcut their lots and would keep a lot of the trees. It would absorb a whole lot of groundwater, and we wouldn't be hearing as much about flooding all the time. It's amazing how much water a tree can drink in a day's time. So anyway, I just appreciate everything you've done. I appreciate the fact that we applied a little bit more of a common sense thing when we looked from 10 to 20.
Yeah.
I think that those things are important to show that, you know, we value what's going to be built, and we want it to be built in the right way, make it, you know, make it reasonable. So thank you.
Commissioner Sears.
Nothing, Kate. Thank you for the work.
Commissioner Sanders.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that work. Yes, we do. So a motion to
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, we're still in the public hearing, so we need to see if there's any public comment.
Yes.
Does anybody wish to comment on this proposal at this time? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Duke Garrity, Out of Ex Home Builders Association, Government Affairs Director. I do want to thank Kate. We have talked about this order for a while, and I'll make it as quick as I can. I spoke at the, at both Planning Board meetings when it was brought up, and our association, we're not in favor of this. We're a property rights group, and we don't understand why you'd be forced We're a property rights group, and we don't understand why you'd be forced to put in a tree or to save a tree. I did speak to planning board about some personal items. I owned a house in Naxet Acres for 15 years, had one live oak tree left. That tree haunted me for the 15 years that I owned that house. It kept growing over. I kept cutting it back. Couldn't get grass to grow underneath it. The tenants that I had in that house, it was a year-round tenant. It weren't weekly. And every tenant in there said every time the rain would come off the driveway, we had a mud hole back there. The doors would come in and people would go out there, mess around. The kids would come in all full of mud every single rainstorm. I do own another property, a condominium in Florida. We have some giant live oak trees. For the second time in four years, Hurricane Eon, $35,000 worth of damage in tree removal and branch removal from the hurricanes we had there, too. We keep letting them grow higher and higher. Like I said, it's personal. It's a lot of work. I believe, we believe, that our owners that we contract with have the right to landscape their property the way they want. I don't understand a live oak tree contributes to the health, safety, and welfare. And most of the houses we've built, we've had a lot of people come in. And not much in Naxet, because it's not a heavily treated area, but it is growing more and more now. But we got into areas in Kitty Hawk and sometimes in Currituck. And they'd say, "Well, we'd love this lot. Leave as many trees as you can." And we'd work around it. And when the house was done, they'd say, "Could you get that bulldozer back here again? We've got too many trees. We don't have any room." And I said, "It's not free. They just don't come back here again." So that's why we try and spend a little bit of time. And I did hear one story recently of a church, and I couldn't even tell you which church it is, but they wanted to expand their rear, add some more parking, and make a picnic area back there. And they were told that they can't do that because there's too many live oak trees back there, and these live oak trees take precedence. So that's all I'll say. The rules that were changed, the 20 feet from the house is a big difference. The tree that I had all the problems with was about 10 feet away. And there was only two trees in front of the lot. And so Gary Ferguson was the planning director, and I'm happy to say, "You're taking one down. You just do me a favor and leave that one tree." And I didn't think much about it. I said, "Sure, I'll leave that tree." And like I said, that thing haunted me for years. I had to power wash that side of the house every year. Couldn't get grass to grow. Had to go up there on the roof and try and trim it back from growing over the roof. And they grew fast. Anyway, I'll leave it up to you to decide what's in the best interest. But our clients and our association has a policy that we let the clients decide how they want to landscape their properties. Thank you.
Mr. Garrity, a question?
Yes.
Mr. Garrity? Mr. Garrity, you mentioned a church, and you said you couldn't recall which church.
Jay Overton spoke, talked to me about it a while ago, and I don't remember which one it was.
That church was in Naxet, correct?
In Naxet, yes.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to comment on this proposed ordinance? If you'll go to the podium, sir, and address your comments to the board.
Hey, good morning. My name is Greg Sherman with Sherman Property Services. I manage an HOA in Naxet, the Villas HOA. And I appreciate, just wanted to say thanks to the board and also to Kate on the clarification and the work done. As you can imagine, back in an HOA such as the Villas, 120 condos that I'm responsible for maintaining, you know, the look and the landscape of the community, you have 120 different opinions on what is allowed to be trimmed or cut. So I appreciate, again, Kate, the clarification. My one question would be that the change on the amount of room between 20 to 30 feet, is that for just new construction? Or, maybe I read it wrong, or is it, if we have an existing tree that's located next to a building or a structure within that 20 feet, is that allowed to be brought to the town to ask permission to be removed? Or is it just for new construction?
If you would, Kate, so he can pick it up.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I would say, and that's in the S P D 20. So anytime you feel, as is clearly written in the appendix, the tree is a danger, some danger to your property, danger to the public, is diseased or dying, then of course, always come to us, and we'll check it out. And you can, if it's, if any of those things apply, yes, you can, of course, remove the tree. If there's nothing wrong with that tree, I guess it would depend. You're in the S P D 20, so if it's a live oak, generally, if there's nothing wrong with that tree and it's not proposing a problem, then you'd have to show some, you'd have to show some sort of evidence that there's something wrong with it. But generally, the 20 feet is more for construction purposes. Now, I think there's still a lot of leeway written in here about chances for removal if it's going to damage your foundation. You know, sometimes when the trees are too close to a foundation, there can be evidence of cracking and uplifting and things like that. So yes, you would be able to, you'd have to show evidence of that, but we would be able to approve something like that. But I think that the 20 feet is more of a condition of a site plan and new construction. At least, that's the way it was always written in our ordinance. And so we've kind of kept with that, but at the same time, provided a lot of opportunities for removal in other ways. And of course, if you're not in S P D 20 or S E D 80, it's, you don't need a permit to remove a tree unless it's a live oak. So we wouldn't even be involved if you weren't in the S P D 20, which is Maritime Forest Special District. So I just wanted to clarify that, too, that if you're in an R2, you know, you want to take out a loblawy pine, you don't even need a permit for that. So, yeah, hopefully that helps. Okay. Yes.
Does the board have any more other questions for Ms. Jones? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment on this proposed text amendment? If not, we will conclude the public hearing at this time, and the board may begin its deliberations.
All right. Is there a motion to be offered?
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance as presented and also the consistency statement as presented.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I want to thank staff for their work on that and in approving that ordinance. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. John, that brings us to our last public hearing for the morning.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. And on this particular item, the town sits as a quasi-judicial body. And so there are special instructions that I would like to provide as we get into this public hearing. We will now open the quasi-judicial hearing. When the town is considering a special use permit or a site plan amendment, the board sits as a quasi-judicial body. A quasi-judicial hearing is the process by which the board adjudicates how the general law applies to a particular situation based on an evidentiary record presented during the hearing. Your two key responsibilities are, one, to determine the contested facts, and, two, to apply the legal standards to the facts. You may apply only the standards already contained in the ordinance. You are not permitted to change or modify those standards during this hearing or as part of your decision in the case. In conducting this hearing, certain safeguards must be instituted in order to give the applicant a fair hearing. The applicant has the right to cross-examine witnesses and offer rebuttal evidence. The procedure of the ordinance must be followed. Board members may question any witness at any time during the hearing. If you wish to ask any questions, let me know, and I'll make sure you get the opportunity to do that. Questions from the floor will only be permitted by those who have been sworn to present evidence. Now, a member must not vote on this application if the outcome of this matter, of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct and substantial financial impact on the member. If such a direct and substantial financial conflict exists, the member should disclose this and ask to be excused from consideration of the matter. Also, if any of the members present have had any contact with anyone prior to this hearing in which the particulars of the application were discussed, or if you've received letters, email messages, phone calls, or other correspondence or contact from anyone concerning this matter prior to the hearing, you must disclose those communications. You must base your decision on this application entirely on the facts presented during this hearing and disregard the particulars discussed with the applicant or any other party. Also, a member must base his or her decision on the evidence presented during the hearing. A member who has developed a predetermined opinion or bias on the outcome of this application before this hearing must not participate in this particular application. So at this time, I ask whether any member of the board has any potential financial interest or has received any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed at this time, or if anyone has a preformed opinion that would preclude them from serving on the board at this time.
Mr. Lottie Airfirm would be the architect for the work that would occur if this were approved. So I would like to be recused.
All right, then a motion to recuse the mayor would be appropriate?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Lottie, I have a relative that works at this business, but I have no financial interest and have not talked to anybody about it at all.
Not, the relative is not your spouse, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, then that would not preclude you from participating in this, at least on a financial conflict, as long as none of the other disqualifying factors are present.
Mr. Lottie, I'm in a joining property. Just want to make that present. I have no feelings.
Joining property, but not any, but not the subject property?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And do you have any predetermined decision on what should happen with this particular application?
Not at all.
All right. Anybody else have anything they wish to disclose? Doesn't appear that anyone else needs to be recused from hearing this at this time. Now additionally, your decision must be based on competent, substantial, and material evidence properly entered into the record of this hearing. Crucial facts used to determine the outcome of this hearing must be based on sworn statements made by witnesses during the hearing. While you may be presented with copies of unworn statements contained in letters, et cetera, such unworn evidence can only be used to corroborate or supplement other sworn evidence that is presented during the hearing. Unsworn evidence, such as letters or emails, can never be used as the sole basis for your decision. All right, so at this time, I'm going to ask that those who will be presenting evidence in connection with this application, if you'll please approach the town clerk so that she can administer the oath. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So at this time, we'll begin the evidentiary presentation with the presentation of the staff's analysis presented by, again, Planning Director Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. As noted, the applicant in this request is Chris Greening on behalf of T W's Bait and Tackle. It's a special use permit site plan amendment to consider the reduction of three required parking spaces with the use of three compliant bicycle racks. The section of the code that speaks to that is Section 10.15.2.5, and that's included in your packet if you would like to review that in more detail. As part of that section of the code, there are a couple of regulations that have to be met in order for the special use permit to be considered. It states that total parking requirement for a proposed non-residential use may be reduced by up to three spaces at a rate of one parking space per bike rack if one or more bicycle racks are located and provided that. The subject property has frontage along a two-lane roadway or a sidewalk, or a similar path crosses the property or is located on the frontage of the property. You'll note from the survey that we have here, this property is adjacent to Satterfield Landing, which is a two-lane roadway, and it also has a multi-use path along the eastern boundary of it. So it does meet that requirement. Each bicycle rack must be highly visible and conveniently located in close proximity to the entrance of the principal structure. And when you look at this survey, so this is the primary structure. This is the accessory structure over here. Here's the entrance off of Satterfield Landing, and they're proposing a bicycle rack right off the entrance adjacent to this parking space, as well as another bicycle rack located in this area. And then, in order to take advantage of bicyclists that might also be coming from the property to the south, which is Plaza del Sol, they've proposed an additional bike rack. I apologize, the mouse is not cooperating. But in and around, oh, there we go, this area. So those are where the three bicycle racks are proposed. We do find that they are in highly visible locations and convenient to the entrance of the principal business. Each bicycle rack must support at least five bicycles, which this does. And the parking reduction shall not exceed more than one space per 10 spaces provided, and it does meet that requirement as well. The additional parking spaces that are being requested are required to serve a proposed 1,568-square-foot addition of retail space that's going to be within the existing footprint. They're proposing to construct a mezzanine to provide for this additional retail space. That retail space necessitates five additional parking spaces. They were able to accommodate two of those spaces within the existing parking area, and the additional three would be offset by the bicycle racks. Height, architectural design, buffering, landscaping, lighting, signage, and stormwater management are all unaffected by this request. I've outlined the parking request, so I won't go into great detail with that. Approval from the Dare County Health Department isn't required for this request. However, if this request is approved and they can proceed with their retail expansion, health department approval will be required at that time. The town engineer has reviewed the proposed traffic circulation, and that's been reviewed and approved as well. The fire department has also taken a look at the proposal. As always, it has to comply with the North Carolina Fire Prevention Code. And while it's not part of this request, we did want to note that the proposed location of the two new parking spaces, which are here in between the accessory structure for storage and the primary building, that those two new parking spaces have been reviewed and approved by the deputy fire chief, Shane Height, with the condition that exit doorways and access to public ways must always be maintained and unobstructed. And this will be confirmed as part of the administrative site plan review, should this request be approved. Also, our public works director has reviewed and approved the proposal as well. Based upon this analysis, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the use and development standards and would recommend approval of the special use permit site plan amendment as it's been proposed. The planning board saw this at their November 15 meeting, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval as it's been presented as well. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And of course, Mark Casten is available if you have any questions. He's the architect.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wyatt. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? Does the applicant have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? All right, all right. Thank you very much. Anything further, Kelly?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, at this time, we'll hear from the evidentiary presentation from the applicant.
Hello, my name is Mark Casten with Cahoon &amp; Casten Architects. I think Kelly has done a marvelous job of expressing what the owner's intent is here, and this is an effort to gain some additional retail space as a mezzanine inside the facility. And the bike racks are going to be an added benefit to both employees and customers to, because currently, they park underneath there, and it's kind of a mess of bicycles. So this will consolidate them and improve the property and help encourage bicycling to the facility as well. So that's about all I have. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Casten? All right, thank you, sir. All right, does the board wish to receive any other evidence regarding this matter before you begin your deliberations? If not, we will conclude the evidentiary presentation and this hearing at this time, and the board may begin its deliberations on this proposal.
I make a motion that we approve the special use permit site plan amendment as presented with the following findings of fact. The use will not materially endanger the public health and safety if located or proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted. The use as proposed will not overburn the firefighting capabilities and the municipal water supply capacity. water supply capacity of the town, as such facilities and capabilities will exist on the completion date of the conditional use for which the application is made. The conditional use will be in harmony with the existing development and uses within the area in which it is to be located. Adequate utilities, accessories, drainage, parking, or other, other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. And lastly, adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous for his evil. Thanks, everyone. I think that brings us to H2, nope, I'm sorry, G1. About to skip the update from the Planning Director. Kind of buried in there.
Thanks, it is buried, and hopefully it won't take very long to move through it. As always, I've given you guys an update of the primary meetings that we had going on for the month of December. Moving forward with the planning board, at their last meeting, which was December 13, 2022, we did have a presentation provided by Tim Pafferty and Lee Nettles of the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau with regard to the Soundside Event Site. There was continued conversation about the historic character area. We did have the initiation and consideration and recommendation for adoption of a text amendment to the UDO to eliminate multifamily from the C2 General Commercial District. We also had the initiation of a text amendment as it pertains to the definition of dwelling unit, what constitutes a dwelling unit, and to clarify language related to accessory structures and accessory uses. So staff will just now kind of be diving into that, so there'll be additional updates to that. With regard to the historic character area conversation, staff, staff presented to the planning board three maps for their consideration. The first map was just an area of the moratorium that had the current zoning designation. The second map depicted the area with a C1 neighborhood commercial zoning designation. The third map had a combination of this area with C1 and R3, high-density residential zoning. And staff discussed several other informative attachments. There were excerpts of the UDO that were related to the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, the uses that are currently permitted within the C1, dimensional standards for each zoning district, a listing of all the commercial businesses that are located within the moratorium, and any potential nonconformities that may result from any rezoning that we would move forward with. So that is ongoing, staff is still working on that. We'll be presenting more information about that to the planning board at their January meeting. After a lot of discussion, planning board members provided staff with feedback on their preferred mapping options and what additional information they would like to see moving forward. At the planning board's next meeting, which is January 17, we expect to continue this conversation on the historical character area, and also any headway that staff makes on the initiation of that text amendment with regard to single-family dwelling and accessory structures. So Board of Adjustment, there was no meeting in December, but I just want to reiterate, we do have an appeal that the BOA will hear on January 12, so that's coming up shortly. Quick update on the Septic Health Advisory Committee, which we adopted that and provided a new charter for them at your last meeting. Planning staff put out an online call for volunteers for the new committee. Interested applicants can apply online. To date, we've had one application, but we intend to keep the form up, up into mid-January for additional people to request to serve on that committee. Staff also completed a targeted mailer to property owners in the higher-risk areas due to groundwater rise in South Max Head, and I've spoken with our environmental planner, Connor Twitty. We have received quite a few inquiries and phone calls as a result of that mailer, so that was successful. We hope we continue to get more, more people reaching out about that. So we just had a great update on the Estre Shoreline Management Plan from Biohabitats and Deputy Planning Director Kate Jones, so I won't go into that. The North Carolina Resilient Postal Communities Program, the main thing to update here is that the data loggers have now been installed, so, yeah, that's exciting. With regard to the E-Tip project, there was a meeting held in November with CSI, the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, and Sendia Labs. They provided a presentation on energy, on an energy modeling tool called the ReOpt to identify solar and battery storage options within the town of Max Head, and CSI has, has taken the lead on that. They'll be discussing those findings with Dominion. Hopefully, that will be occurring this month, and perhaps at your February meeting, we'll have more information. We are moving forward with the accessible restroom design at Wellbone Park. And again, just to reiterate, we will not hear back from the Part of Accessibility for Parks Grant until spring of 2023. A quick update on the Dune Management Cost Share Program. These numbers have changed since I wrote this report, so instead of 54 property owners that have now submitted applications, we're up to 61 property owners. And we have used 206, $206,000 of the 270 that was allocated, so that's, that's being used up, and I think we're getting inquiries on that often. The Doughty Park Farmers Market Art and Culture Item, that has pretty much wrapped up. We heard a little presentation from Paige Griffin, the event coordinator, this morning on the holiday decorating contest, which was a lot of fun. The last thing that we, that we held was the Flashlight Candy Cane Hunt, that was on December 20, and it, it far exceeded everybody's expectations. Thank goodness we bought a lot of candy canes, but there were well over 75 children in attendance, so it was, it was really exciting to see that. And the Art and Culture Committee will be planning to present an update on their 22 season and what they would like to see moving forward in 23 to this board, hopefully in March. And the only other thing, I'd made a note that I wanted to let you guys know, is our used-to-be code enforcement officer, Christopher Trembley, has been promoted to planner, and we have just recently hired Chase Hunley as our code enforcement officer. Today's his second day, so I wanted to pass that along, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, Commissioner Sanders. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you for the report, thank you.
Great, thank you, Kelly, appreciate that. All right, and that will take us to item H2, which are committee reports from our commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner Sears.
Nothing to report at this time, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
No, I know there's a meeting coming up later this, at the end of this month with the GovEd Committee, but I will not be available to attend that, I'll be out of town, so.
Thank you.
Nothing to report, sir.
Okay.
Nothing further.
Okay, yes, all right, thank you. That brings us to the annual appointment of Board of Adjustment Chair and Vice Chair. You had in your packet the need to appoint those positions, and that the folks currently serving in those positions are interested in staying, if that be the, the board's will, and so.
I'll make, make a motion that we appoint Margaret Suppler as Chair and Bobby Gentry as Vice Chair on the Board of Adjustments.
Second. Thank you, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That brings us then to item four, discussion, consideration of a new Ocean Rescue Pay Plan.
Just want to introduce real quick, so basically, we discussed this with the board at the retreat back in November. Chad and the chief and deputy chief have been working with Jan, our Human Resources Director, to look at ways we can improve our recruiting and retention of lifeguards, ocean rescue staff, not only during the peak season, but during the shoulder season. As you know, we always lose a fair number of staff at the middle part of August, and so we want, we were looking at ways to try to keep things more consistent throughout the season. Chad has done an excellent job, as well as the other staff, of looking at how we compare to other agencies, not only locally, but along the East Coast, and getting creative and finding ways to, to incentivize recruiting and retention of staff. We're asking for this now because Chad would like to begin recruiting for the 2023 summer season, and so we appreciate the board's consideration.
Yeah, thank you, I think he covered a good bit of it. Again, requesting this in order to recruit for the summer under these conditions, so I guess a quick summary, we're asking for a $2 an hour increase in our pay, so currently it's at 16, and we would go to $18 an hour. We would look to cover a portion of this by readjusting or taking away that, the housing stipend, which is currently there, which would cover close to a dollar of that increase. We're also looking at our bonus system, which has been in place for over 20 years and hasn't changed. So we were looking to go for the lifeguard bonus from $200 to $600, and for supervisors from $500 to $1,000. And then we looked, the third component of this is implement a Labor Day incentive program, is what we called it. One of our biggest crunch times is that August 15th to Labor Day is when kids typically want to go back to school, and sometimes, you know, they want a little time off between when they stop working, go back to school, so to incentivize them, the, the people that can stay or can come back and help work weekends and that type of thing, that we would increase their rate by $2 an hour during that timeframe, basically that three weeks timeframe, and would be paid out in a lump sum bonus at the end of that. Some other things we did, we looked at, this proposal in here to help adjust the cost is a phase-up, phase-down program, which some other agencies use, and so outside of Memorial Day weekend, at the start of the summer, we see, typically see a dip in beach population. It spikes really big for that holiday weekend, and then it usually dips back down until schools let out, so part of this proposal would include reducing the number of stands by five positions for that time period, it's about three weeks, to help offset some of the cost as well. So the, by adjusting, taking the housing out and adjusting number of stands beginning the season, there would be no adjustment to our current budget that would help pay for the cost. What we are requesting is an increase, I guess a preapproval increase for our budget for '23, '24, which just tolls out to just over $71,000. Any questions that I can answer for you guys today?
Board of Representatives, any questions? Commissioner Sears?
I know it was brought up by a couple other commissioners in their meeting with Andy, but do you feel that the EMT rate increase is adequate enough, and do you feel that your request is also competitive enough?
So the EMT thing, the EMT certification is, is a step above as far as medical training for, for guards. We incentivize that for them to be very prepared. It's not required. We prefer for our supervisors to be at that EMT level, because we're associated, they have to do that training on their own, go out and source it, whether it be through one of the local colleges, COA. Lenora Community College does a high-risk online program, they go out and do that. And so it's a way for them to increase their level of training and to provide us a better level of service, and also if they want to advance into more responsibility, that's an incentive for them as well. Whether it's valued enough, I mean, that change, that 50% increase, 50 cents an hour increase has been in place since, since I started here 20 years ago, so, you know, I, I'm not sure the answer to that question, but.
Answer it honestly, and then if 50 cents isn't enough, then put that on the table.
Yeah, I mean.
Statement to you.
I'd love to see it at a dollar. I mean, it's a great benefit for our staff to have that, to have the incentive there for them to go and get that extra level of training. As far as going to $18 an hour, I think that that is going to put us in a competitive spot, you know, not just with lifeguards, I mean, this fall, I went to regional meeting and national meeting, and the difficulty of recruiting staff, and I know it's not just in lifeguard agencies, it's all, you know, toward the base industries, finding staff. It's lifeguard agencies are having difficulty up and down the East Coast and West Coast and everywhere in between, and I don't want to get to a point, like North Nardle Beach this summer was at 45% of their staffing. And, you know, they just preapproved a bunch of changes to try to correct that. I know one of our, our feeder systems, so to speak, we get a lot of kids that come down from Canada and work, and they're great, great staff. One of the, there's basically two places they choose to go. The other place outside of Max Head is Ocean City, Maryland, and Ocean City, Maryland raised their pay rate to just over $18 an hour, including housing. So like, you know, that's what, you know, the type of things that we're up against and things I'm comparing and trying to stay competitive with, not just locally here, but, you know, up regionally as well, so, yeah. So, yeah, I, I do believe that this, these changes, and we have several meetings and discussion, back and forth on some of these things, that it's going to have a positive impact on our recruiting and retention.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Commissioner.
Only one question, just for clarification. The 15 down to 10 until mid-June, then after mid-June, it goes back to 15 stands? Okay, I just want to make sure that was.
So we're basically looking at the third, it's usually around the third Monday, I think, in this coming year, that would be June 19.
I just want to make sure that, while it dipped down, it went back up?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You know, I too brought up about the EMT pay during my meeting with, with, with Andy, and I just, this has been needed for a long time, and when we do it, I want to make sure that we get it right.
Sure.
And I'm in favor of everything, and I'll, and I'll vote to approve it as presented, but I hope that through the chief and deputy chief, that you will let them know if something's needed to be changed in there that would help you more to incentivize those employees to get their EMT certifications. And I hope that this helps you with your recruitment as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. The EMT certifications, they have to do that on their own, they're not, and how many hours does that involve, usually?
Huh? Yeah, 200 hours or so.
How many?
200 hours?
200?
Yeah, it's, it's an extensive class, I mean, so basically, you look at Dare County EMS, there's three levels, well, we're at EMR, but to work for Dare County EMS, for example, there's three levels of certification that they set, the bottom one is EMT, and then EMT Advanced, and then Paramedic. So it is a certification they can acquire that opens up other doors for them. Because we're associated with the fire department, they can get a fee waiver for the class, so they don't have to pay for the class, which is really nice, so I always encourage it for a lot of these kids that are unsure what they want to do with their future, it's, it's a, it's a good education that opens other doors, and, yeah, the kids are bumping here, working at the beach, and a lot of these kids work this job for the first time and find something that they're passionate about, helping people, and, and that's what they have, so, thank you.
Thank you. Chief, did you want to speak?
Good morning, and thank you for considering this. In concern with the EMT, you're rightly so, it is a big jump from EMR, which is your standard training, to EMT, and putting EMTs on the beach does help with outcomes. Incentivizing. Incentivizing that, I do believe adds value to the lifeguard program and will produce a better outcome for the citizens and visitors. So, if it were, my suggestion would be, is to allow us to explore, to incentivize them even further. It does provide added value, and I think it is something we need to look at incentivizing even further.
Thank you. All right. Any further information, Chad?
I think that covers it for right now, unless there's any other questions, yeah.
Yep, and I was sort of going to ask any other questions?
No other questions.
Okay. Then, maybe we should put a motion on the floor.
I'll make a motion that we approve with the increase to a dollar for EMT.
All right, thank you, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second discussion, Commissioner Brinkley?
No, thank you for making that motion.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Brinkley.
I'm good.
Okay, yep, thank you. And I appreciate staff being comprehensive about this and looking at the other markets and not thinking too narrowly about this, and really keeping us in a position to get those great staff coming back, that, keep that pipeline open of those great kids who keep coming here. It's a great thing. And as to whether, you know, EMTs affect an outcome, I mean, look at what happened in that football game the other night. I mean, having medical staff proximate to a situation is the difference between life and death. So, having people out there on the beach when there's a heart attack or near drowning or anything, it's just, it's super critical. So thank you for that. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, modified. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir, you're welcome. All right, that brings us to item H5, consideration of a text amendment to chapter 42. Chief?
Good morning again. I had spoken to the manager recently, and I think it's been in some time needed to adjust our town code. I'm requesting and also recommending to add a section under our town code, chapter 42, under our traffic, that will cover barricades. These will be placed on the town streets or highways in the event of a natural or man-made incident, where the police department or the town has deemed travel unsafe or to restrict the amount of vehicle traffic in a particular section of the town to preserve any property. It would also include our beach accesses, where we have recently placed chains up to make it easier when we do decide to close the beach accesses due to weather or high tides. Instead of having to have nothing there, then we place the chains there, it's easily for our staff at the police department to go hook them up, we have reflective signs on them that state the beach is closed as well. We currently have no course of action when we have barricades up, unless you, the mayor, have deemed a state of emergency, or if we specifically have an officer stationed at that closure, and then they're failing to obey a traffic control officer. Right now, we don't have anything unless one of those two things are in place. Speaking to the manager, he thought this would help us a lot. I know we've been in need, and we don't close streets regularly, we're not looking to close streets regularly. But have been times in the past, we've had several rain events where we've had to close streets. We do close the streets during the town, St. Patrick's Day parade. And when we do have barricades up, sometimes people decide to go around them, this will give us a course of action. I come up with a definition, and a barricade would mean an obstruction or barrier placed on across the beach access, road, street, or highway to prevent the passage of a motor vehicle. A barricade could be any form of fencing, cones, barrels, chain, or roping material intended to prevent travel past a specific location. For the ordinance language, driving through or around the barricade, section A shall be unlawful for the driver of any motor vehicle to drive over, through, or around any barricade erected for the purpose of preventing traffic on certain accesses, streets, roads, or highways that have been closed by the town for construction, repair, or dangerous conditions, excuse me. Section B, the town's official governmental and emergency motor vehicles are exempt from the restriction of operating beyond the barricade in the performance of the town's official duties. And then subsection C, a service contractor performing duties for the repair or reopen the area would be exempt while performing official duties. I'm requesting that this new language and ordinance be listed under chapter 42, article 3. That would be deemed a misdemeanor. Sections 1 through 6 governs the general penalty and enforcement of the town's ordinance. All sections that are currently under article 3, right now be 6, under chapter 42, except chapter 42-41 and 4292, are all criminal penalties. Those are listed under a different section where those two could be civil or criminal. I would just request that we place the barricade language under article 3, where it's a misdemeanor only. That way, we could charge for a state citation, or need be a physical arrest. Hopefully, neither of the two will be needed, but that would give us more ground than just a $50 civil violation, in my opinion. Any questions or...
Yeah, I looked at chapter 42, and, you know, we're thinking about streets, but chapter 42, I think, also covers multi-use paths and some other issues. I know there are definitions in there for that. Chapter 42 also is where we list and regulate, you know, low-speed vehicles, motorized vehicles and all of that. When I, and there may be rare circumstances, I'm just asking if you thought about this. When I think of motor vehicle, I think of a car driving around a barricade on a street or a beach access. There may be times that we want to regulate all traffic through an area because of an emergency, including on the bike path, including keeping people from bikes and pedestrians and everybody else out. Would it be better to say, "Any vehicle regulated by this ordinance," which covers all of those? Or is that, did you think about that, and is that too broad?
And I did think about that, and I thought about leaving it just as vehicles, but then a bicycle, and the general statute now is considered a vehicle, it's not a motor vehicle. But then if we did have an area closed down, and I'm thinking back to the rain event in 16 or 17, I'm keeping vehicles out of there to prevent, basically wakes, and trying to prevent water from going into people's property. But if somebody wanted to walk in there or just ride their bike through there if it's four or five inches of water, I really didn't have a problem with them, you know, riding that bike. And if I state vehicles, then that is going to cover that bicycle. And if somebody's trying to get in there to gain access to make sure that they don't have any other damage, I'm not restricting them from go checking on their property, I'm just trying to keep vehicles out of there from preventing further damage.
Okay, all right, that's logical, just wanted to be sure and ask the question. So I'll start, Commissioner Brinkley, since you...
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Sanders?
No questions.
Commissioner Brinkley?
No questions.
Okay, very good.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Chief, you are not proposing to change what's written here, right? You mentioned article 3, and I think this says article 2 in the ordinance, that's before the board, and...
Article, I believe it's article 3 that goes to where it would be a misdemeanor.
All the articles 1, 2, and 3 are all misdemeanors.
Okay, 1, 2, and 3, and then, but under, when I was reading sections 1-6 yesterday, it made me, chapter 42, everything under chapter 42, article 3, had the misdemeanors laid out, and then that had the exception of 42-41 and 42-92, which covers the official devices generally, obedience to abide by those, and then the operation of non-motorized muscle-powered electric-assisted low-speed vehicles.
The only reason I'm asking, Michelle pulled it up, and what's written, it says part 2, article, that article 2, and that's what was presented, and so, is this what you're asking for to be adopted? And that's where 42-47 is in the code, is in section, article 2.
Okay.
And I think it works, I mean, it's still a misdemeanor.
As long as it's just a misdemeanor only, and not be civil or misdemeanor.
It says criminal, it says shall be a misdemeanor.
Yes, sir, criminal penalty, yes, sir.
I don't think you need to change it, I think what's written here is correct.
Okay.
Is what you gave us, so, just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, and I looked at it again yesterday, and maybe I got my articles mixed up when I was going through them, and then looking at section, chapter 1, section 1-6, that was explained and everything.
I think this is right.
Okay.
Again, all right, in that case, with that clarification, then a motion would be in order.
A motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. I just want to say, I appreciate, we've had a couple of circumstances today, and this is one where, you know, this is a housekeeping item, you know, and I appreciate staff being proactive on this stuff and not letting this kind of thing just sit around, where you've got the time and the opportunity, and stuff needs to be done, I appreciate it being done and being brought to the board, so I thank you for that.
We, during Hurricane Matthew, we obviously had plenty of flooding on the beach road, and I'm not sure, this ordinance obviously wasn't in place back then. And the flooding and the damage to businesses was bad enough, but then we had people driving through the area, and the town received some blistering emails from some of the businesses about that driving. We don't want that again, and I really appreciate Chief bringing this forward and making sure that we're not going to have that again, so...
Very good, thank you. That brings us to item I, items referred to and from the town attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to ask that when the board has its closed session later on the agenda, that the purpose also include to consult with the town attorney regarding matters, protected by the attorney-client privilege, and to preserve that privilege.
Very good, thank you. That brings us to items referred to and from the town manager, and we need to discuss a donation, Andy.
Thank you, Mary, Michelle's bringing something up for your reference really quickly. Well, we received an inquiry from a property owner, Matthew Tolasco, on Segal Drive, who wishes to donate property to the town. It's a vacant lot on the beach, east of where his house used to be. He's not since sold that house, but still owns this lot. We do have an easement on this lot for beach nourishment, which is perpetual. The lot is not valued very greatly, I think its tax value is $4,500. But I see no harm in accepting this, and so I think it would be at minimal cost. I talked to John about it, he agreed. So we just wanted to present this to you and see if you're agreeable to accepting this. If so, then you can just make a motion to that effect, and we could take care of the paperwork.
Okay, all right. In case there's any discussion, would someone like to offer a motion?
Make a motion that we accept this donation as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion, commissioners?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, having a motion and a second?
I see John...
No, no, I'm sorry, I thought you were getting me to move on without a vote.
Yeah, nope, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and let's get a letter of appreciation to these folks for that donation.
Okay.
That brings us to the board of commissioners' agenda, and I'll start on this side. Commissioner Sanders, anything to bring to us today?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley? Commissioner Brinkley?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to give some, or volunteers this option, to give direction to the staff. When you're looking over the UDO and the zoning, can we look at each definition and each use and make sure that it's complete? Because still, like I mentioned, when the UDO came out, a lot of these assigned housing types, there's no way you could build these housing types in the town under the current UDO because of the restrictions that vary around them, size of lots that are needed, et cetera, and so forth. So can we take the extra initiative during this time to look at each one of those and see where they fit and modify the UDO to just let it be constructed at that point?
Yes, thank you, can we do that?
Sure, sure.
If it's the...
And we're talking about uses similar to multifamily.
Well, I can tell you, townhouses, you can't build townhouses in town, no matter whether you want to or not, because one ordinance conflicts another ordinance, which basically limits you to building only a couple of townhouses on any piece of property. So, when you're looking at that, there's just some loopholes in there that need to be erased.
Okay, you know, and we talked about that, I know I talked to most, everybody on the board about the townhouse definition, and that is something that we agree, we need to address, and so we can do that for sure. And then we try to look at other things as well.
Thank you, is it board consensus that the staff looks at these issues and clarifies these definitions?
Clean up as much as possible.
Yes, and, yeah, keep it going on a regular basis. Constant.
Constant, it's like a bath every day.
We need constant cleanup.
As we go through that, and we talk about cleaning up and definitions, areas that we don't have a definition, such as what is affordable housing to us in the town of NAGCET?
That's one that's missing too.
Could we bring forward something that we consider a definition? Not based on what somebody else is telling us, but based on what we think it is.
Yeah, what serves our community and workforce.
During our retreat, we had a discussion about this, obviously, we've got the moratorium in place, and we're working to complete that in order to meet our deadline. And then we also talked about looking at other areas of the town where the zoning may not match the comprehensive plan, and that's on our list to complete.
It's a big list, I know.
It is, and so, but that is something we plan to do as soon as we get the moratorium finished and to you. We will start working on that, and we'll work on this simultaneously as well. What we told the planning board when this multifamily item was presented was that we would try to wrap that up within the first half of 2023, calendar year 2023 would be our goal, hopefully sooner, but we know that it's a sensitive topic, and we want to get the work complete, so, thank you.
All right, did I touch all the commissioners?
I've asked just a question.
Yes, sir.
Andy, is there any other action that you'd like to see us take today to move any process forward?
No, I think the item Commissioner Sears, Mayor Pro Tim Sears just brought up, was something that we had questions about, so we appreciate that, and we've got that direction now. I'm not sure we need anything else at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the mayor's agenda, which is consideration of the North Carolina League of Municipalities Business Meeting Voting Delegate. They have a list of legislative priorities that they have sent out, and they would like each board to designate someone to vote, basically to prioritize those. I will offer myself as that delegate, if the board is willing, or if you would like someone else. And I am happy to sort of check off that list and then circulate it to the board to make sure we're in alignment before actually voting.
This one's me.
Okay, I believe we're required to vote on this.
I make a motion that the mayor's representative...
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. One other thing, since that mentioned the League of Municipalities. It's been mentioned in our mayor's meetings, the, sort of the dearth of building inspectors available locally, and it's been brought up before as an issue at the state level, and when the legislature acts on it, you know, when it, they tend to take a stick approach. And according to Rose at the league, they're actually considering this year just putting a time limit on what, how long towns have to issue permits or make inspections, and that's their approach without regard. And so I talked to Rose, and it is on their radar, there are other municipalities who've brought this up as an issue. We keep trading building inspectors back and forth between jurisdictions. We need sort of a deeper bench, and I've also talked to the local Home Builders Association about it, and so I, and I've talked to the AIA about this as well, North Carolina AIA about this. So I'm not sure what the ultimate solution to this is, you know, simplifying, training, offering more training, which probably merits a conversation with COA, offering more training, changing the regulations regarding building inspectors coming from other states, whatever needs to be done. But if we could get, you know, if we could get all those organizations kind of on the same page, then maybe we could, maybe we could find a solution somewhere, somewhere in all of that. So I just wanted you to know that I was putting a little bit of effort in that, in that direction. That brings us to a closed session. That brings us to a closed session and we have a request for a closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A6 to discuss personnel and we will add to consult with the town attorney.
Under A3, yes, sir.
So I offer that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, all right. The board will be in closed session. All right, thank you. The board has returned to open session. Mr. Leidy, will you please report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the board did discuss matters within the attorney-client privilege with the town attorney as well as a confidential personnel matters, but no other actions were taken.
All right, thank you. I don't think there was any other business to come for the board, so I think, and we don't need a mid-month meeting, so I think we're at the point of adjournment.
Mayor, I'd like a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you.